Hello, everybody, we are back. So welcome back to our Revelation Bible study called Twenty for 2020. We're taking twenty looks at the Book of Revelation for 2020 vision. We want to have clear vision, forward vision. A lot of times in our culture and our language will say hindsight is 2020. And we don't want hindsight, we don't want to look back, we want to look forward. So we have twenty glances at the Book of Revelation in your Bible. There are sixty-six books in your Bible, forty different authors. Revelation is the last of those books, it completes the New Testament. And the Book of Revelation does not have an S on the end. A lot of times when we refer to Revelation, we'll say Revelations just by, you know, happenstance or habit. But I want you to get in the habit of calling it the Book of Revelation. That's what it's titled, that's what it's called. And the first five verses summarize what the book's all about. It is the revelation of Jesus Christ. There's no other revelation that we need more than the revelation of Jesus Christ. There's a lot of people when Jesus walked the earth that loved God. They went to the synagogue, they went to the temple, they worshiped Jehovah. But the truth was, they didn't love Him in their heart, they just practiced religion. So when Jesus showed up, they missed Him. They claimed to love God, but they rejected Jesus. The same is true in our culture, that if we're not careful, we'll claim to worship Jesus. We'll go to church, we'll, we'll read the Bible, we'll be good boys and girls, good Christians, and we'll ask Jesus in our heart. But if we don't have a revelation of Him that only comes through the Holy Spirit, we'll miss Him. So if we reject the Holy Spirit, we'll miss Jesus. So when Jesus returns, and as Jesus is here today, let's not miss Him. My good friend David Guain taught me this, he said, well, it's, it's a scripture. So he didn't teach it, but he reminded me of this scripture. He said, Cameron, what you seek is what you'll find. What you seek is what you'll find. So the Bible says, seek first the kingdom and you'll find it. So in our world, if we're seeking sin, we'll find it. If we're seeking prejudice, we'll find it. If we're seeking offense, we'll find it. If we're seeking prejudice, we'll find it. If we're seeking somebody to, uh, um, to sin against or will sin against us, we'll find it. But if we're seeking the kingdom, we'll find it. So let's seek Jesus. Let's seek the kingdom in this event called Revelation in the end time. So let's pray, we'll get started. We're gonna pick back up in chapter fourteen, verse seventeen. Chapter fourteen, verse seventeen, we'll kind of wrap up on the Battle of Armageddon. And then we'll jump into chapters fifteen and sixteen tonight. So let's pray, Father God, we love you, and God, we bless you, and God, we praise you, and God, we say that you are the King of kings, you are the Lord of lords, you are the great I am. You're the Alpha, the Omega, the beginning, the last, the first, the end. Father God, you're the author, the finisher of our faith. God, you created us. You had the first word, you'll have the last word. So Father, we thank you, let's just say that out loud, God, I thank you for blessing me. I thank you for your purpose for me. I thank you that I'm not alone. I thank you, God, that you are with me right here, right now. Open my eyes, open my ears, open my heart to receive your word. In Jesus' name, and everybody said, amen. Grab your Bible, grab a piece of paper and a pen, something to write on. If you want our notes, we have notes every night. Uh, we have some notes, if you want to follow along, you can go to our website, Whitestone Church TX. Go to the Contact Us page, give us your email, request those, we'll send those out to you. We, uh, uh, have a lot of people on our mailing list right now. And if you've missed any of our sessions, this is session number, uh, fourteen. And, uh, if you've missed any of them, you can find the, the first thirteen on Whitestone Church TX YouTube channel. So chapter fourteen, we're gonna dive back into the Battle of Armageddon. So let me just remind us about the nation of Israel. The Book of Revelation is written for the believer, but it's predominantly written to the Jew. It's predominantly written about the Jew. It's predominantly written about Jerusalem and Israel. The nation of Israel, it's written about God redeeming His people. Unfortunately, today, Jew Judaism, uh, in Judaism today, they have the same Bible that we have, but only the Old Testament. A Jewish person who goes to synagogue every, every Sabbath on Saturday, they love Jehovah God, but they reject Jesus. So they don't have the New Testament, they don't believe the New Testament. They believe Jesus was a good rabbi or teacher, but they do not believe that Jesus is the Messiah. They don't believe Jesus is the Christ. So if you and I were Jewish by, by, uh, religion and culture and, and by birth, and we lived in Israel, we would be waiting on the Messiah to come the first time. But as Christians, we're waiting on the return of Christ. So our prayer is that the Jewish people will find Jesus and realize that He is the Messiah of the Old Testament. That Jesus the Christ fulfilled all of the prophetic prophecies spoken of from Genesis to Malachi, Malachi, about the Messiah, and Jesus fulfilled them. And so Jesus is returning a second time. But for the Jew, their eyes will be opened at that return, and then they will realize, oh my God, we missed God, we missed the Son of God. Here He is. So the reason we call this twenty for twenty, twenty is we want us to have vision of what the scripture truly says. So when we look at Revelation, we gotta realize that Jesus is coming back for His nation, His people. So when we look at the nation of Israel, before nineteen forty-eight, May the fourteenth, Israel was not a nation, it wasn't, it wasn't a people group. Since the destruction of Israel in seventy-five-ish AD by Rome, after the death, burial, and resurrection of Jesus Christ, which was around thirty-three to thirty-five AD, about forty years later, Rome comes in and destroys the temple, destroys the people, and scatters them. And they've been scattered as a people group for over nineteen hundred years. So a little less, about seventy-two years ago, Israel came back together as a nation. Hitler, through, through the, through the, um, uh, puppet string, was the puppet, you know, through, through Satan, Hitler decimated and tried to annihilate all the Jews. Over six million Jews went through the Holocaust in the nineteen forties. After that, the United Nations, or what was called the League of Nations at, at that time, gave Israel their land back, the promised land. Now this land is the exact land that God promised to Abraham. It's the land that He showed him, it's the promised land that Moses led them to through the Red Sea. When the Jews left Egypt, they, they crossed the Red Sea and they entered into the promised land after circling in the desert for forty years. They crossed the river Jordan, they go into the promised land. They are now back in the promised land. But that promised land is under huge contention. The Israel, the state, the nation, the state of Israel is, is less than about a seventh of the size of the state of Florida. It's not a huge, uh, uh, landmass. So in nineteen forty-eight, when the Jews were given back their nation, the Jew who, who some lived in America, some lived in Germany still, Russia, China, they lived all, all over the globe, South America had a large population. They were able to go back to their homeland and be a nation again. Well, in nineteen sixty-seven, the Arab nations who hate the Jews, they hate the Jews for several different reasons, but it's basically based upon religion. The Islam Muslim religion wants to annihilate the Jewish people and nation. There's great hatred, not just, uh, Democrat, Republican, different viewpoints. There is an attempt by Satan to decimate or destroy, annihilate all Jewish people, all Jewish custom, nation, culture, religion, everything. Satan hates the Jew. Why? Because it's God's chosen people. Satan hates you and I, why? Because we are made in the image of God. Whether we serve God or not, we are God's image. And so therefore Satan hates us. But Satan's attempt is to destroy the Jew. God's plan will be to preserve them and bring them to the realization that Jesus is God. If you want a small microcosm of that story, follow the story of Saul in the New Testament, in the Book of Acts, Saul who becomes Paul. That is a picture of what's happening to the Jewish people as a whole. Saul was a Christian killer in the name of God. Saul was a good Jewish guy, he was one of the top elite Jews. And he went on a tirade to kill all these Jesus Christ followers, all these new Christians in the Book of Acts, you'll have to read it yourself. But he does it in the name of God. God meets him on a road to Damascus and blinds him with a bright light. And Paul goes, Lord, what have I to do with you? What? And he recognizes that Jesus is God. And once Saul, who is then renamed Paul, once he grasps the concept that, oh, Jesus is God, He's the Messiah, He's the prophesied one of the Old Testament, Paul goes on to write over thirteen books of the New Testament and leads a entire people group to Jesus Christ. When Jewish people come on fire for Jesus, they change the world. There is a supernatural blessing on Jewish people. There's a supernatural blessing on them to, in money, in entertainment, in business. You look up all the Jewish people in entertainment, Wall Street, business, in circles like that. God's got His hand on them, He loves them as His people. But He desires for them to see that Jesus is the Christ, Jesus is the Messiah. Satan hates it. The Arab nations that surround Israel hate Israel. It would be almost like the equivalent of Kansas in the middle of the United States being the only, uh, uh, state that is its own nation. But all other of the forty-nine or, or the contingent, you know, forty-seven different states around it, hate it and want to attack it. It's an easy target. In nineteen sixty-seven, the landmass that Israel possessed or owned, uh, was very small. It didn't have much borders. It was, it was extremely easy to launch grenades or rockets and attack them. So it's called the Six-Day War, and that's when Egypt and Jordan and Assyria, um, uh, Syria attacked them on three different fronts. Through miraculous, um, God, God events, there's great Six-Day War miracles, and I hope you had a chance to look some of those up. God protected them, and they took back more land. They annihilated Egypt in one, like, five-hour attack. It was amazing, no, no other way to describe it militaristically than Jesus coming in and warring for them. Can I get an amen? After that Six-Day War, they gained their landmass. And what, they got what was called the West Bank, and that's where the city of Jerusalem is, that's where the Wailing Wall is. That's the place where it's under great contention that the Jew will rebuild a physical temple. Now, they would have already done it, but there's contention with the, with Islam and the Muslims who have, who have built the Dome of the Rock on what they consider their holy ground. And they're still trying to figure out where the Ark of the Covenant is, is to put into the Holy of Holies in the temple. So there will come a time where the Antichrist will bring peace between the Arab nations and Israel. And allow Israel to rebuild the third temple. And they will offer animal blood sacrifice again. They will put the Ark of the Covenant in that temple. Now here's a little insight that I learned from a Jewish, uh, a friend of mine who graduated from Hebrew University in Israel. Um, there's a strong, great possibility that the Jewish, uh, the, the insiders, if you will, know where the Ark of the Covenant is. They may not have revealed that to the rest of us, but it will either be discovered or they already know where it's at. They're just keeping it a secret until they're able to rebuild. When they rebuild their temple, they will rebuild it and worship Jehovah God there. The Wailing Wall is the only part of the original, uh, structure built by King Solomon that is still there, and it really wasn't even part of the actual temple. It was just part of the retaining wall on the outside of the temple. But that's the last remnant of the holy building or their tabernacle. And so the Jew today offers prayers, and you'll see them on TV, and they'll, they'll be reading their scriptures and, and back and forth, and they'll put notes or prayers in the wall. After the Six-Day War, Israel gained great, uh, confidence militaristically, and the war realized that, or the world realized that they're a force to be reckoned with. When we get to the Battle of Armageddon, now, we're gonna read this in chapter fourteen, verses seventeen through twenty-ish. But we'll also read it in more detail in chapter, um, I should know this, in, in chapter, uh, uh, sixteen, verse, uh, seventeen, where we see the Euphrates get dri- I'm sorry, verse twelve. So we'll read, we'll, we'll read out of, let me, let me say all that again. We're gonna look at the Battle of Armageddon in, in Revelation, chapter fourteen, verses seventeen through twenty. And we'll also look simultaneously in chapter sixteen, verses twelve through sixteen. So we're gonna see this Battle of Armageddon referenced twice. Now, it's not that there's two battles, but one is the, the definition or the, uh, summary of the battle. And then it actually, in sixteen, the sixth bowl of judgment will be the battle itself. Let me summarize it like this. This battle will be again the unified effort of the Arab nations that surround Israel today. Most likely, they will also be accompanied, being backed by Russia, by China, by different nations. At some point, the entire world, and let me say that, at some point, the entire world led by the Antichrist will trample on Israel and slaughter Jews over a two-hundred-mile radius, the Bible says. In verse twenty, it says, one thousand six hundred stadia or furloughings long. That's about a hundred and ninety-three to two-hundred miles of bloodshed. It says, up to the horse's bridle, which is like three feet deep of blood. It is a reference that this will be a Holocaust and annihilation of God's people like the world has never seen. And if God doesn't intervene, Satan would destroy the entire nation. But there's good news, we can read to the end of the story. God intervenes and annihilates Satan. Can I get an amen? But it means this, that the Antichrist will rally the world to attack this one nation. Now, America, especially under the leadership of Donald Trump, President Donald Trump, we're big backers of Israel. We are again standing firm with them. And the Bible says that God will bless those that bless Israel and curse those that curse Israel. So I want to revive, refire something on the insider, but that Christianity is for the American, it's for the Gentile, it's for the world, but we tend to have an Americanized view of Christianity. Let's take it back to its original context. Jesus was a Jew. Jesus was culturally a Jew, he was Jewish by blood, he was a Jew, but yet the Messiah. So there's something that Messianic Jews have to teach us about the feasts, about the different celebrations, about honoring the Sabbath, about keeping the Ten Commandments, about blowing the shofar horn. There's great weapons that God's given us, there's great strategy God's given us. A lot of times, we as American believers, we've so culturally Christianized, uh, or we've, we've, we've Americanized Christianity based on our culture. But let's read the Bible based on Jewish culture. And let's realize this, that the enemy hates the Jew. And it is not acceptable for us as believers to not stand up for Jews or for Israel. The land doesn't belong to Palestine, it's not a Palestinian takeover. The land belongs to the Jew. The Gaza Strip and the West Bank today are what we find in the news under great contention. Those two strips of land were gained by Israel in the Six-Day War. If the Arabs wanted to keep them, they shouldn't have invaded. They lost them when they invaded Israel. God gave them back their land. So let's look at this in, in chapter fourteen, go back with me, we're gonna read six, uh, seventeen through twenty. And I really want us to grasp this, and then we're gonna move into the bowls, uh, into the judgments. Another angel came out of the temple in heaven, and he too had a sharp sickle. With a, still another angel who had a charge, who had charge of the fire, came from the altar and called in a loud voice to him who had a sharp sickle. Take your sharp sickle and gather the clusters of grapes from the earth vines, because it's the grape, because its grapes are ripe. There is a harvesting of this earth, like, like you go to harvest peaches from a peach tree. You don't go too early, you don't go too late, you gotta go right on time. You gotta get those peaches off the tree and season for them to be good produce. God knows the time where He will, He will reap the earth. The angel swung his sickle on the earth, gathered its grapes, and threw them into the great winepress of God's wrath. This is not a good thing. Johnny Cash has an old song, When the Man Comes Around. You ought to listen to it, it's about this, this verse, I don't, you know, anyways, I don't know where that came from. They were, verse twenty, they were trampled in the winepress outside the city. And blood flowed, and it should more appropriately say Jewish blood flowed out of the press, rising as high as the horse's bridle for a distance of sixteen hundred stadia. This would be a tragic war, unless God intervened, the Jew would be in great trouble. Judaism or the nation as we know it. Um, let me just bring up some, some points. Anti-Semitism is a demon spirit, it's an Antichrist spirit. The Antichrist will sign a peace treaty with Israel, granting national security and the right to rebuild the temple. Now, this will most likely happen at the beginning, it has to happen at the beginning of the tribulation or before the seven-year tribulation. Now, I know that that's gonna cause some people to go, what, what? Here's the deal, regardless if you believe in pre-tribulation, mid-tribulation, or post, uh, tribulation rapture. I'm really avoiding those topics. We believe in the rapture. Now, the rapture, we have to hear this. The rapture could take place today, let's say the rapture takes place today. There are verses indicating that this generation shall not pass till they see the coming of the Lord. There is some good evidence that that reference can mean rapture generation. Now that could give the enemy up to thirty-three years to re-establish before that seven-year tribulation starts. The point is this, regardless of when the temple is rebuilt, the Antichrist will bring them into that signed treaty. And during the tribulation, there will be fir- the first three and a half years will be a three-and-a-half-year time period of peace, supposedly, on the surface. Undercurrent will be great annihilation. Undercurrent will be that system that hates Jesus, hates God, hates anything relative to it. But on the surface, it'll be all kissing babies and sunshine and roses. At the three-and-a-half mark, the three-and-a-half-year mark, the middle of that tribulation, Daniel speaks of it, the abomination of desolation. The Antichrist will show his true colors, and he will go in and most likely sit in the Holy of Holies. Would be, and that would be the most devastating blasphemous thing you could do. To recapture the temple, the synagogue, that they, the temple that they will rebuild has an outer court, an inner court, and a Holy of Holies. The outer court, anybody can go into, there's a wash basin there, there's a lot of things ref- referencing. The inner court, you're making sacrifice. But the Holy of Holies was only allowed entrance by the high priest. That's where the Ark of the Covenant is, that's, when, when Jesus was crucified, that's why it's so important to know that temple veil was torn in two. God is no longer trapped, if you will, to this Ark of the Covenant. His Holy Spirit's not behind the veil. Jesus doesn't just make Himself available through this Judaism or Jewish religion. He breaks out of that and says, I am available to everyone. Most likely, the Antichrist will sit on the Holy of Holies or on that throne and maybe slaughter a pig or offer some sort of abomination that would bring great despair and desolation to the Jew. So when that happens, that will happen after this guarantee for national security and the right to rebuild the temple. Um, that right, no politician on the earth today could negotiate that right. We just have to understand, if you saw, if you sat all the Islamic, um, leaderships from the Arab nations down with the Jewish leadership from Israel, there's no peace deal that can happen today. The only person that will be able to broker that lasting peace deal, although it will only be a facade, will be the Antichrist. That's what's gonna make this guy so influential. He's not gonna say, hey, I'm the devil, he's gonna show up saying, man, I want world peace, I love everybody. So it's gonna be a great tragic, it's not gonna be a good thing. Revelation twelve thirteen says this, now, when the dragon saw that he had been cast to the earth, he persecuted the, he persecuted the woman, Israel, who gave birth to the male child. The nations of the world will come to Armageddon. In, 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 uh, three, we'll read it in a minute, three unclean spirits come out of the beast, out of the pit, and fool the kings of the ark to gather together for the great battle. The kings of the earth will be led by these demonic spirits. Now those demon spirits are most likely the dragon, which is Satan, the Antichrist, which is, which is his, uh, is satanic, and the false prophet, which is Satan possessed also. The extermination of the Jew is the agenda. Listen to this out of Ezekiel thirty-eight nine. You will ascend, coming like a storm, covering the land like a cloud. You and all your troops and many people with you. The Battle of Armageddon will cover the land of Israel. Again, could you imagine the state of Kansas, I'm just picking on Kansas, cuz it's in the middle of the United States. Could you imagine the entire world invading Kansas? How could they defend themselves? I mean, it's, it's impossible, except through the defense of Jesus Christ. So just get the magnitude of this, uh, in, in our minds. Joel three two says, I'll gather all the nations and bring them down to the valley of Jehoshaphat. Zechariah twelve two, behold, I will make Jerusalem drink a cup of drunkenness to all the surrounding peoples. They will lay siege against Judah and Jerusalem. Zechariah fourteen two, I will gather all nations to battle against Jerusalem. Wow. The Battle of Armageddon will cover the entire land of Israel, from the plains and meadow to the valley of Jehoshaphat to Edom and Jerusalem. Um, let's look up in chapter sixteen. I know we're going deep, but I want us to grasp this, chapter sixteen, verse twelve. We're gonna skip over to the sixth bowl judgment. Now, in chapter fourteen, we're getting a preview of what's happening, again, a panoramic. There is, um, uh, again, remember, when Revelation is talking, it's talking about what has happened, like the Six-Day War, what is happening, like there's always conflict between Israel and their neighbors. But it's also talking about what will happen. And in this reference in chapter sixteen, the sixth bowl is the judgment, this will be the battle. Let's look at verse twelve, chapter sixteen. Then the sixth angel poured out his bowl on the great river Euphrates, and its water was dried up, so that the way of the kings from the east might be prepared. And I saw three unclean spirit like frogs coming out of the mouth of the dragon. Out of the mouth of the beast, the false prophet. Those demon spirits are reminiscent from Egypt. Egypt worshiped different gods, and God slaughtered every one of them with the ten plagues. All the plagues were, were in response to a god that the Egyptians worshiped. And one of them was the frog god, and it was a sexual, uh, in nature for fertility. It was a perverse god, it was an unclean god. Frogs are considered unclean animals. And so the spirits that come out of the beast and the dragon and the false prophet, these are these demon spirits that These are these demon spirits that worked through them to seduce the world to attack Israel. The world's not gonna attack Israel today for any rhyme or reason. There's no way you could get the entire world today in twenty twenty to invade Israel. But when Satan rules and these demonic spirits are, are deceiving the world, the world will be drunk. And drunk people do things they normally wouldn't do when they're sober. So when it says they drink the cup of drunkenness. They're so deceived that it's as if they're drunk and they just go along and do whatever. So, let's read through that and, and understand this is a big battle. Verse fifteen, behold, I'm coming as a thief. Blessed is he who watches and keeps his garments clean, lest he walk naked and see his shame. Verse sixteen, and they gathered them together to the place in Hebrew called Armageddon. The war against the Jews and the nation of Israel. The battle of Armageddon will be the end time battle. You could call it World War Three, but it's, it's really the Revelation War. It's the war between Satan's kingdom and God's kingdom. So, I know we skipped around a little bit, but we're gonna go backwards now to chapter fifteen, we're gonna go through that real fast. And we're gonna jump into these bowls and we'll come back to this sixth bowl, uh of the bowl of Armageddon. So, here we go. The prelude to the bold judges, chapter fifteen. Chapter fifteen is the shortest chapter in the book of Revelation. We went from a heavenly, I mean earthly view, now in chapter fifteen, we're back, what's going on in heaven? So we kinda see this back and forth view, like if you're watching a movie. One scene is, is on earth and the next scene is in heaven. So in chapter fifteen, this is the prelude to the bold judgments. Now, we're gonna recap this in the next couple sessions. We'll recap the entire book of Revelation. But let's remember, the seals are referencing time periods and they're already happening. The trumpets are announcing. The return of the king. So when the trumpets happen, when the judgments of the trumpets happen, it's to bring people to Jesus. The wrath of God is now the judgment. This isn't designed per se to bring people to God, because judgment usually doesn't bring people to God, grace and mercy does. So when these judgments happen, these are people who have already chosen, if you will. So, let's read it and, and understand that when we get to the bold judgments, it's a bad day on planet earth. It is a bad place to find ourselves. Vert-, chapter fifteen. I saw another sign in heaven. A sign means signal. A sign in heaven, great and marvelous. Seven angels having the last of the seven plagues. And, and in them, the wrath of God is complete. And I saw something like the sea of glass mingle with fire, and those who have victory over the beast, over his image. And over his mark and over his number of his names, standing on the sea of glass, having harps of God. They sing the song of Moses, the servant of God, and the song of the lamb. These people have conquered this demonic deception. And I pray that you and I, that we overcome the deception, the mark of the beast, the name of the beast, the system of the beast, the number of the beast. Verse three, great and marvelous are your works, Lord God Almighty, just and true are your ways, oh king of the saints. Who shall not fear you, oh Lord, and glorify your name. For you alone, God, are holy, for all nations shall come and worship before you, for your judgments have been manifested. Your judgments have been manifested. So this is a reference. That these judgments are now going to happen. If you manifest something, you're bringing it out. After these things, I looked and behold, the temple of the tabernacle, the testimony of heaven was open, and the temple came. Uh, and out of the temple came seven angels having seven plagues. Clothed in pure bright linen and having their chests girded with gold bands. Then one of the four living creatures gave the seven angels. Seven golden bowls full of the wrath of God who lives forever and ever. The temple was filled with the smoke of the glory of God from his power, and no one was able to enter the temple. Till the seven plagues of the seven angels were completed. It's an interesting verse. And I don't really know how to describe it or even really what it means, except I think God just wants to be alone as his wrath is poured out. We don't serve a God that revels in wrath. We serve a just God. And when he serves justice, I think it breaks his heart. I think it, I think it, it, it hurts him. God's not up there with the big hammer waiting to whack us and go, haha idiots. No, he loves us so much. But he's just and he's righteous and he does bring punishment, and he does judge honestly and correctly. Look at chapter sixteen. We've gone from a parentheses, we've gone from a pause. Into this final judgment. Now I believe that these judgments, these bowls will be poured out in the last. Three and a half years of the tribulation. Now when we look at the first three bowls. We're gonna find that the judgments are against people. Uh, that, yes, the, uh, and the next, the next four are against Satan's kingdom. So, we're gonna see God pouring out these bowls, but these bowls of wrath are not a good thing. So let's, let's look at this, the seven bowls, chapter sixteen, verse one. Then I heard a loud voice from the temple saying to the seven angels. Go and pour out the bowls of wrath, uh, of God on the earth. So what I meant to say, the first three are, are earth, the, the next four are against Satan's kingdom, is city Babylon. So the first went and poured out his bowl upon the earth, and a foul and lonesome sore came upon men. Who had the mark of the beast. Now, men that don't have the mark of the beast won't get this sore. Ones who are sealed by God, that's so cool. Now. I could go a lot of different directions, but just real quick. Only the people that have the mark of the beast are gonna get this sore, and those who worship the image. This is a direct plague against people, not the earth, not the, not the kingdom, not the city, but people. Um, this was the sixth plague in Egypt. When Moses goes to Pharaoh and says, let my people go for the sixth time, same plague. Um, this is an outward sign of an inward heart condition. A boil or, or a sore is, is a inward infection that manifests on the outside. Um, this is a prophetic prophecy that's fulfilled, listen to Deuteronomy, chapter twenty-eight, verse fifteen, twenty-seven, and thirty-five. The second bowl, the second angel poured out his bowl on the sea, not necessarily people, but on the sea. And it became blood as of a dead man. Every, here's a tragedy, every living creature. In the sea died. Now, that sea is most likely the Mediterranean Sea, which borders Israel and those Arab nations. It may include other seas or other parts of the world, or, or all of them, I don't know. But I'm pretty sure this is like a direct attack against those who are attacking Israel. It's the first plague of Egypt when Moses said, let my people go, and the Nile River turns to blood. The third bowl, when the third angel poured out his bowl on the rivers of the springs of water, they became blood. And I heard the angel of the, of the water saying. You are righteous, oh Lord, and the one who is and who was and who is to be. Because you have judged these things, for they have shed the blood of saints and prophets, and you've given them blood to drink. For it is their just due. I like this angel. This angel's like, God, you judged pretty correctly. They slaughtered your people. Give them blood to drink. They want blood, let them drink blood. I just think it's such a great, you gotta have some humor when you're reading this. I heard another of the altar saying, even so, Lord God Almighty, true and righteous are your judgments. The first three bowls uh are against the earth, the last four are against Babylon. So now, these next, uh, the, uh. The next, um, four are against the city and Satan's throne, if you will. Uh, the fourth angel in verse eight pours out his bowl on the sun, and the power was given to him to scorch men with fire. And men were scorched with great heat, and they blasphemed the name of God. It just amazes me when, when God brings punishment, if your heart is soft towards God, you repent. If your heart is hard against God, you curse him and your heart gets harder. So that's why we have to repent so fast. Because if we're not careful, over a short period of time, our heart will become very hard. Have you ever wondered what makes an old person bitter? You ever met a bitter old man or old woman? Man, they're really hard to deal with, and, and we walk away going, man, they're so bitter. Well, how did they get that way? Because they became bitter when they were younger, or middle aged. They didn't just overnight turn eighty-nine and go, I'll be bitter now. No, it, it was a heart condition that's manifested to rock hardness. These people, when this, when this judgment comes, this great heat, they blasphemed the name of God, who has power over the plagues. Go back to Egypt. Did the Egyptians know the god that was bringing the plagues? Yes. Pharaoh said, I'm God. He worshiped Ra. He worshiped the sun god, but Pharaoh claimed to be God. And Egypt had these major gods that they worshipped. But the god of the Hebrews, the god of the slaves, those peons that build all of our stuff. You mean those, those workers that do all the stuff that I don't wanna do? Their gods bigger than our god? I don't think so. And it took them ten plagues to believe them. Same thing's happening. For some reason, people will believe that Satan is stronger than God. That the Antichrist is more powerful than God, and they'll hate the god of the Jews. They'll hate this god. And they will likewise want to kill the Jew and their god. And they did not repent. It's a key word. Uh, sun worship is the earliest form of paganism. Earth worship, listen to me, earth worship is modern day paganism. We live in a society that worships mother earth, not father god. Mother earth is idol, demon, pagan worship. Nimrod, um, was the first man. Uh, Nimrod built Babel and they were, he was the first one to bring pagan sun worship to the planet. Uh, again, Nimrod was not a good guy. He was rebellious. He hated God. He was a hunter towards God. Uh, actually, the, the name Nimrod in Hebrew means marauder or maraud. It means to raid, it's a raider. Um, Nimrod, uh, we talked about Babel a couple sessions ago, and so we're gonna spend some more time on that. In a minute, I'm gonna come back to this bowl, but I wanna end with this system or the city. That we'll look into further tomorrow night, the city that the Antichrist is setting up. So stay with me, the fifth bowl. Verse ten, the fifth bowl, the fifth angel poured out his bowl on the throne of the beast. I love this one. He attacks the beast direct. See, Satan's gonna build his own city, his own temple. His own throne, he will rule the world. You have, we have to grasp it. If Hitler had, had achieved his, his, his objective of world domination. He would have set up his throne, his office, his, his house, his seat of power somewhere in Germany. He would have set in this position to rule the world. The Antichrist will sit on a physical throne. Like our president or like a king of England or whoever. The fifth angel pours out his bowl directly on the throne of the beast. And his kingdom, and they become full of darkness. They get what they want. And they gnaw their tongues because of the pain. Well, how could darkness cause pain? We've all been in dark places. If you've ever been to like Carl's Bed Cavern or Inner Space Caverns and. You go down to the bottom of the depths of the, of the earth as far as we can get, and they turn out the lights for like thirty or forty seconds and they. Claim that it's absolute darkness. Well, it's freaky and it's weird. And you're like, yeah, I can't even see the hand in front of my face. I can't get acclimated to this absence of light. Why would I gnaw my tongue though? Because the absence of light here, the darkness here is the absence of Jesus Christ. Jesus Christ is the light of the world, not the sun. On the fourth day, God made the sun, the moon, and the stars. Yes, on the fourth day. But on the first day, he said, let there be what? Light. The light he's talking about is not illumination from the sun. See, we don't know our Bible well enough to know, oh, for three days, there wasn't the sun, so what caused light? Jesus. When we read the book of Revelation in, in, in a couple sessions, uh, next week. We'll see, heaven has no sun. It doesn't need the sun. It has the sun, the S-O-N, Jesus the Christ. So the reason that people gnaw their tongue off, without Jesus, you have no peace. You are an absolute wreck. You're an absolute destruction. You self-destruct. Every atheist on the planet today can claim they don't believe in God, but God's still with them. We can have dark times, there could be dark sin, but Jesus is still with you. Jesus removes himself, if you will, and it destroys them. They blaspheme the god of heaven because of their pains. And their sores, and they did not repent of their deeds. They still got sores. Ha ha, cracks me up. Still got sores, okay. I guess what happens in Vegas doesn't stay in Vegas. Okay, here we go. Why? Darkness is the absence of light. The sixth bowl is the drying up the Euphrates River. Here's the deal. The Euphrates River was the original border to the promised land. Today, it's on the eastern front of Israel, and it's not their, 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 uh, uh, national border. But it's the original biblical border. So we've got to understand this. God's gonna dry that river up in this battle of Armageddon. He drives that, that battle, that, that, uh, river up so that the nation. That invades Israel with two hundred million soldiers. Do we remember that? Do we remember that back on the trumpets when, when the, uh, the angels of the bottomless pit? The, the spirits come out of that pit, and when there's two demon armies, one is an army of locusts. And this one is an army of men that caused war against the earth and destroy a huge percentage of the population. That's this army. This is the fulfillment of that trumpet. So the trumpet sounded, but now it happens. This is when two hundred million people invade Israel. It's the world's biggest army. It's not from a single nation. It's not like China. Uh, who could have a billion man ar-, you know, army, or, you know, America. No, 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 it is the world. Led by the Antichrist. The only establishment around today that could fulfill that would be the United Nations. And that is a good vehicle for the Antichrist. We have to acknowledge that that is not a holy union. That is a, a very anti-God agenda-driven, uh, United Nation. So, when we get to the sixth bowl, the sixth angel poured out his bowl on the great river Euphrates. And the water was dried up so that the way of the kings from the east might be prepared. We already talked about the demon spirits of frogs will inhabit the beast, the dragon, and the false prophet. Um, this battle is gonna ultimately be against God, and we'll talk about that a little bit more. Satan will convince man that he can destroy God. No difference than Nimrod at the battle of, at the city of Babel convinced men. That they could raid heaven and destroy God by building this tower. The river Euphrates or this area was the first murders, where the first murder took place. Cain kills his brother Abel. We know that the entrance to the Garden of Eden is somewhere in this territory. We know that this, this is the cradle, if you will, of human society. Where a lot of things take place. So let me read through them. Uh, and this is where I wanna talk a little bit of more about Nimrod. And, uh, and then we'll get into the seventh bowl. So sin began around this Euphrates River. It's where, um, again, Cain kills Abel, but Nimrod sets up his. Babel in the plains of Shinar. And so I wanna talk about that a little bit, um, because this will be. The, um, the. The um, the Antichrist's temple, this will be his place of rulership. And so let me find my notes, cuz I'm, I I'm lost myself for just a second. Um. We need some music to play in the background, cuz I've completely lost my spot. Here we go, okay, um. Babylon will be the last stand and the stronghold of Satan and the Antichrist. So when we look at Babylon, the city, let's remember that the system that the beast comes out of. The system will give him the foundation to establish his throne. And so all demon religions, let me, this is what I wanted to say. All demon religions are founded east of the Euphrates River. Psalms ninety six five says, for all the gods of the nations are idols. But the Lord made the heavens. So let me just kinda, let me just kinda wrap it up with that, I don't wanna talk too much more about Nimrod, I'm gonna change gears. This battle is in the same territory. So that's all I really want us to get, is that this territory has been hostile territory between. The kingdoms of light and the kingdoms of darkness since the beginning of time. So the seventh bowl, let's go, let's just keep going through the seventh bowl. The seventh bowl, the seventh angel poured out his bowl into the air and a loud voice came out of the temple of heaven. From the throne saying, it is done. And there were noises, thunderings, lightnings, and there was a great earthquake. Such a mighty and great earthquake as had, as had not occurred since men were on the earth. Now, the great city was divided into three parts and the cities of the nations fell. And great Babylon was remembered before God to give her cup of the, um, to give her the cup of wine of the fierceness of his wrath. Then every island fled away and mountains were not found, when it says island, it does mean islands, but it means there's no escape. Like an island of escape, there's no escape and the kingdoms or the mountains are the kingdoms of the world. The kingdoms were not found and great hail fell from heaven upon men. Each hailstone weighing about a hundred pounds or one talent. Men blasphemed God because of the plague of the hail, since that plague was exceedingly great. So I wanna say this, um. Chapter sixteen, we go through these bowls of wrath, we go through God's final judgment on the earth. And this final judgment is not a place where we wanna find ourselves. This is the last three and a half years of this great tribulation time period. It's the time where Jesus Christ will come back on his white horse and rescue the world, if you will. Save the world, redeem the world, take back which is his. I appreciate your time and I know there's a lot of confusion, there's a lot of struggle trying to put all these pieces together. But this is how I want you to read the book of Revelation, remember it's puzzle pieces and we're putting those pieces together. So we've gotta read it as a whole, we've gotta remember that it's looking, taking a look in the past, in the present and the future. We know this and I'll say this probably every night till the end of this session, these sessions. Satan's Antichrist system is already being established, there's already the attempt for a one world currency. One world government, one world religion. The Antichrist won't bring those things with him, those things will exist pre him or prior to him. He will just drive them to a heightened level, he will bring them to a manifestation like the world has never seen. God's judgments are holy, God's judgments are true. Satan is a tyrannical leader who's self uh um deceived. And deceives the world into following him. So I wanna encourage you, give your heart to Jesus Christ today, give your life to him today. Don't wait for some rapture, don't wait for some tribulation, don't wait till you see it. Because the truth is, unless God opens our eyes, we'll be blind to it. Hear me say that again, lest God opens our eyes, we'll be blind to the Antichrist. We'll be blind to the one world government, we'll be blind to this religious system takeover, we'll be blind. God says, have eyes to see and ears to hear. So tomorrow night, we're gonna pick up with the great harlot of chapter seventeen. And the great harlot is what got me confused, I I was getting my bowls birth in the uh confused with chapter seventeen. Where we're gonna go tomorrow night is we're gonna see this great harlot, this woman that rides the beast. It baffles me to think that one person can come in and rule the world. I could see it through force, the Antichrist will do it through force, but it'll do it through deception. But it's even a little more concerning to see that one guy, one false prophet will rule the world religiously. So we'll look into that tomorrow, chapter seventeen, we're gonna see this, this person that God calls the whore, the harlot. And the harlot rides the beast. The biggest blow to God that Satan wants to deal or to land. Is that people would worship Satan. People would worship Lucifer, Lucifer, luci- uh Lucifer or Luciferianism is what it's called. The biggest ha 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 that Satan wants to give God is that, hey, I took over your world, that's, that's really yours, I took it over. I robbed you of your world, hey, I killed your people, but by the way, everybody worships me, they think I'm God. This harlot system is what is turning the hearts of people to worship the enemy. Not the Lord, so we'll pick that up tomorrow night, thank you so much for joining us. I wanna bless you, I wanna pray for you, I wanna say that God is good, God is in control, God has a plan. So Father, I pray that you open our eyes, open our ears. And that God, as we walk through the book of Revelation, we would not be confused, I'm sorry I said it earlier, we would not be challenged. We would see it clearly, so open our eyes and our ears and our understanding in the mighty name of Jesus, amen. Thank you so much for joining us, we'll see you again tomorrow night for chap, for session fifteen at six thirty here. Live, bye.